You are watching XS LaPorte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next, it's February fifth, twenty twenty five, meeting of the LaPorte County Board of Commissioners. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot XS LaPorte County dot org.
Welcome all to the LaPorte County Commissioners Meeting, Wednesday, February fifth, twenty twenty five, at ten AM. We're gonna stand up for the pledge allegiance and we're gonna have a moment of silence.
I'd like to add a moment of silence for former Connie Highway Supervisor Louie Reese, who passed away this weekend.
My pledge allegiance to the Father, and to all in the United States of America, to the solid law of which stands one nation, on God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Commissioner Graham Marissa.
Present.
Commissioner Hallifield.
Present.
And Commissioner Haney is not present. We have a quorum.
Consider agenda.
I'd like to make a motion for the, uh, remove three items from the agenda. Under ten, old business, remove the consideration of solar moratorium. It needs to go back to plan commission first. Remove ten C, consider standardized form for travel request. We need to discuss that with the council since a joint resolution. And our new business, remove eleven D, the fire suppression system.
So we have a motion I'll second.
Excuse me. The fire suppression system issue is me regarding the Shamba matter.
Okay.
It's not, yeah, so I would ask that that say on, so we can move forward.
Okay.
That's the same as a Shamba thing?
Yes.
Okay.
Then I'll amend it to leave eleven D on.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on. Consider approval of January fifteenth, twenty twenty five minutes.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes as they were presented.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Consideration of claims.
Payroll ending one ten, twenty twenty five, one million, five hundred and eight thousand, three hundred and two dollars and thirty two cents.
I make a motion that we accept the claims as presented or payroll as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Operating expense claims, three million, four hundred and eight thousand, sixty two dollars and seventy five cents.
I make a motion that we accept claims as presented.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public comment. We are open to public comment. Good morning.
Hello, this is Tommy Kalavich from thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm a Michigan City man. Uh, good morning, distinguished and honorable LaPorte County Commissioners. I have a public service announcement I'd like to make. This is for the twenty first annual Jerry Carson's Club Scholarship Challenge Chili Cook Off. Now Jerry Carson's, he was a really, really pioneering figure in the Indiana High School Sports officiating community. They have this, they've been having this every year for the last twenty one years. It's gonna be Saturday, February second, the, the DAV Danny Bruce Post Chapter twenty three on Ohio Street, Michigan City. The time is gonna be, uh, twelve noon to three PM. Tickets will be sold for a five dollar donation. Of course, they have their meat boards and all the other good stuff they have. You know, all the service clubs all get together throughout Michigan City and, and it was a really great event. I've been in this every year. Please feel, join the fun, vote for your favorite chili. Chili heads, welcome. So I encourage everybody, all the, everybody comes to that every year, so. Um, also when I'm saying that something really special is gonna be happening next month, I know we just recently wrapped up the prep tournament they have at the Civic every year. Well, this year, Michigan City High School has a good portion of hosting all three rounds of the Indiana High School Boys Basketball, uh, basketball tournament. This year, we get to have the sectionals, the regionals, and for the third year in a row, now we're gonna have the semi-state. I know the LaPorte County Convention and Visitors Bureau plays a big role in this. They now have their ad play very prominently displayed right in front of our scorer's bench. It was kinda where, where, you know, Mr. Foster and Chuck White and Stan Holcraft all sit do their scorekeeping announcing. But, uh, uh, one, you know, we're gonna have fourteen, over that three week span, we're gonna have thirteen, fourteen different schools coming to Michigan City throughout, all over the northern part of our state. And as we're all aware, the county now has all the, the authority and jurisdiction over the entire length of four hundred north. And that's one of the roads that people are gonna be coming in on. And we know how bad every year with the big box stores and wonder how bad the littering gets every year. I know that you had our men and women from the LaPorte County Highway Department last year cleaning up the litter. And I have to have them come out a week earlier and clean out the litter. This, you know, we gotta make, it's really important that we make a good impression on these people when they come here, you know? It's just like, you know, at work, you know, when the big shots come from corporate, a tour of the plant, you gotta shut down production, clean up departments, so you, you know, they stay here. Uh, it's just kinda one thing I may have made a request to ask to get them out there and, you know, do a little cleanup for us. Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick question. You said February second or did I?
It's February twenty second.
Twenty second, okay. All right, thank you.
It always happens on the same day as the girl's semi-state.
Okay.
I think Marquette's gonna be on it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good morning, Randy Novak, uh, LaPorte County Council, but I'm here for the, uh, Fairground Management Event Corporation. And on your agenda, you have removal of the canopy, and I just thought I'd get up here and talk now because I got a couple of other things. But we're requesting, and this is a joint thing with the fair board, the canopy is, uh, not structurally sound, and we're gonna remove it. And we're actually having a presentation by a, uh, Westville, uh, architect who is putting together some designs for new entrance. So we're in the process of doing that, and we're looking at grants to get that and everything else. Um, second all, I want to thank you two commissioners for showing up at the, um, Heart Safe Community Event that was yesterday at the heart, at the, uh, Healthcare Foundation. Um, and we'll be coming to you in the future, to the commissioners, to try and get as many of our county employees either trained or educated on how to use AEDs and, and further that, because we're working on trying to put together, create it so that LaPorte County is a heart safe community, uh, as LaPorte City is. The other thing is, and you took it off the agenda, is the moratorium on the solar. Um, I've talked to, uh, Steve, and I, I know I've talked to Connie, but I'd love to see whether you put a moratorium on or not. That's not what I'm arguing. My thing is, is to make, to tweak our ordinance so that we're a solar ready community. Because the, the facility that's already been approved, it's estimated that we're leaving about eight hundred thousand dollars a year on the table for ten years that we'd be eligible for, eligible for if we made some small tweaks, and I'll forward you those, um.
Yeah, and I would suggest you work directly with.
And I, I have.
Cause he's on the plan.
Plan and commission meeting. Yeah, you sent me that already. This money would be, is to be utilized in those areas that would help the residents and everybody else if there was ever an issue and everything else, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment.
Good morning, Commissioners, Andy Ski at LaPorte County Project Management, two zero three East Harrison Street, Michigan City. Um, I'm not on the agenda today because I didn't put my request in, in time. I have one discussion item, possibly two for the jail project. I didn't know if I would be allowed to speak on those at this time, or if this is strictly for public comment.
You can speak on them.
Okay, thank you. May I approach the?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the commissioners and the council had approved the installation of the three doors that we would put in the mechanical chases that we cut where, where there was no doors there prior. Um, I'm requesting approval per my email yesterday to change the door style from a standard door and frame that would go all the way down to the ground to this, uh, maintenance door. This is in compliance with correctional facility. The door, uh, the part that you contracted our firm for it is a little cheaper to buy, but we'll spend a little more resources in installation. So the main difference is the door doesn't go all the way down to the ground. So when we cut the openings, you know, to, to deal with the issue, the, the hot water heat rupture, we cut those openings all the way to the ground. This door would be a course of block high, so we'll have to do some masonry work to relay that course, and then this door would go in there, which I think it's actually probably a better solution, because then when they're mopping the hallway and cleaning the hallway, you don't have to worry about water and chemicals going under that doorway into that shower area. Uh, the, the main benefit is the lock set that had to be purchased directly by the county. That was an expensive ten thousand, seven hundred outside the door purchase, and that would offer the county approximately sixty nine hundred dollar savings on the lock set, because this door accepts a different lock set, which would still be in compliance with the existing correctional doors, but it would offer you that savings. But since it is a change outside what we had discussed and approved at the meeting, I would like your permission to implement that change on your behalf.
Just so I, so I get this straight. So if we go with this different door.
Yes.
And the doors are basically about the same amount of money?
Uh, the doors are a little cheaper to buy, but we're gonna spend a little more labor, resources to put them in, so that'll be a wash.
But on the ten thousand dollars for the lock sets, we're gonna save sixty nine hundred dollars out of that?
That is correct, sir.
Well, that's a no-brainer.
Yeah, I just didn't wanna change something without coming and seeking your permission.
Yeah. Um. I make a motion to go ahead and do that.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Um, the, the second issue.
Scott Cooley, LaPorte County Project Management. On that same note, on those doors, the county will still have to purchase the locksets. They still won't sell them to us. You'll have your, the same keyway that's right on the chase right next to it, the same key will work for both doors, so.
So have you checked with, uh, with the sheriff's office to make sure that they haven't ordered it yet?
Uh, he has not ordered it yet. I'm getting him the new specs.
Okay.
As we can save a little bit of money for you.
So that'll go through his department, not the commissioners, okay?
Um, secondly, there's a couple leaks in the existing showers, um, throughout the building. Um, one of them would be at a couple meetings ago, it's creating the leak over the gas pipe, which is in the area referred to as the back forty. Um, so the leak that needs to be addressed right away, um, that would be in the pod we're working on from the ruptured heating pipe, because obviously we can't put that area back together. Um, so on your behalf, we did seek, uh, pricing on replacement units, the same units that are there, just to buy the units and connect the plumbing that came back with a budgetary price for three showers of approximately hundred and seventy nine thousand, or hundred and seventy three thousand. I apologize for that. And then with that, you still have to remove the old units, get these units in there, and then there is no spec, no drawing, no detail, no flashing kit on how to install those new units. So an estimate by the time you do that, roundabout number, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, um, for three showers. There's eighteen or nineteen of those throughout the jail, which comes to about four point four million and change. Um, so we, we've done research, we've called, we've done product information. Um, this is not a guarantee, but from all the information we have been able to gather, which we spent a lot, large amount of time researching this, um, whether you purchase new units or leave the units that are there, even if you have three new ones show up today at a couple hundred thousand, you still have the issue with the issue of the unit you have now. You have to get those sealed and get those in place, and there is no spec how to do that. So to me, speaking out of line, but on your behalf, that just doesn't make good sense to spend a quarter million on something that doesn't say exactly specifically how to seal that. We might as well make an attempt at the units we have, because we're gonna be back to square one when those would show up anyways. So from what we can tell, I do not believe the products or the prep that was done on the existing units was proper. So, uh, they make products now that are security adhesives. They come with specialty primers to guarantee adhesion um, between dissimilar metals, which would be the stainless frame and the masonry. Uh, when you use those primers, which is for the adhesion, you have to run air, you know, air filtration with chemical filters, because there's some pretty nasty chemicals. So it would require the sheriff to empty that pod for us about a week, so we could use those chemicals. Um, and then there's different hardnesses of those adhesors, adhesion materials, because obviously there's some that's super hard, but then technically when the shower would flux or contract or expand, then that would create a, a break in that seal, even though the primer could be outside that primary area where the adhesion is. So you have to get the right product that is secure for this facility, doesn't allow leakage, but also has some polyurethane product in it to allow some, some flexibility. So we believe to the best of our ability with the research we've done, we have the appropriate path to maybe stop some of that leaking. Um, that is a five or six year maintenance issue, you know what I mean? So, so speaking, again, just doing math, if that's fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars a pod, if that's a five or, five or six year deal, if there's eighteen pods, you push that a year, you go six or seven years, you could do three sets of showers every year on a rotation. And then by the time you got back in six, five or six years, you'd be where you started, you'd be within those product guidelines, and hopefully that would stop the leaking. But what I would ask before we look at possibly spending a quarter million to buy new units for that pod, and we still don't know how to install those properly, because there's no specification for that, I would ask for permission for the commissioners to let us, uh, have an opportunity at the units that are there, since we've never worked on those, work with the sheriff to get that pod emptied for a leak a week, get in there with some grinders, clean all that old adhesive out of there. Um, dry those areas properly, use the proper primers, and see what kind of adhesion we can get, and then see if we can get that leaking to stop. And it, it would be the perfect pod to test on, because with the doors we just referenced, that we installed behind those units, we could get behind those units for a month, six months, a year, two years, and we could exactly get on there underneath there and check for leaks to know for sure if it was a successful attempt or not.
So I have a couple questions. Guy, you wanna ask us?
Uh, after you. Me? Okay, so.
Get the legal part out.
This is the, this is to resolve the leak that's over the pipe, which is causing corrosion.
Yes, sir.
Yeah. And I heard you give a ballpark that it's north of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Uh, for what we would like to try, this is a budget, because we've never done it before, so it's about sixteen thousand dollars.
Okay, that's where I was confused, because.
To, to buy the three shower units that are in there and ha, to, and have those show up to replace what is there is about two hundred and fifty thousand. But then when those show up, there is no information that comes with those on how to install those, so they don't leak, so.
Let me just ask you this, Mr. Ski. So in order to see if your plan would work or be a stopgap measure, it's gonna cost under twenty thousand dollars?
Approximately sixteen thousand.
Under twenty thousand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay, that's all I have, because I was concerned about bidding and this, so that would be a normal routine maintenance and repair type of thing, so that would be something that could be done.
So.
Thank you.
My question, I have a que, a couple of questions, because I've been up there to see them. The units are all stainless steel, and it's not actually the unit itself that we're having a problem with. It's where the unit meets the concrete. There's where the flooding comes in, correct?
That is correct.
I, just so that everybody out there, because, you know, people are gonna be asking us, well, what kind of units are they in that? So we're, we're making it public. They're, they're stainless steel. There's nothing wrong with the actual stainless steel unit itself. It's actually where it meets the concrete. So the work that you're gonna be doing is actually sealing where the unit that we have meets the concrete.
The joint.
Okay.
So this new product, I'm, I'm guessing here that the use of the showers, people standing, moving around, you know, it's flexing that where it's not sealing? And this product you're gonna try will, will be able to take that movement and stay sealed?
That's what it's designed for, yes, sir.
Okay.
The, the key is obviously to have all that old product removed, grind that out, dry it, use the proper primer, which is some nasty stuff. That's why we need to empty the pod, run air filters, and then make sure when we install the, the final adhesive, that that primer's on there, because that's what makes the bond between the dissimilar metals, which would be the concrete, the stainless, and, and those type areas. So it looks like historically, there have just been some standard, uh, caucks or adhesive used, and that, that obviously, over time, that's gonna fail.
Have you spoke with the sheriff about this, about emptying the pot or anything?
We have not. The fir, the only communication that anyone was have was my email I sent yesterday.
And so the sixteen K or we'll, we'll say not to exceed twenty, uh, thousand will be for all three units?
That's all three showers on the fifth floor, one complete unit in the area we're working.
So we, so.
Yes, ma'am.
The thing is, is that we approve it here and then send it to the, or we'll be able to talk to maintenance and have maintenance pay it out of the maintenance budget.
Correct. This is a, a normal maintenance and repair, and then it, it would be their budgetary item. And then eventually, if they run out of money, they'll have to go to the council later on in the year to get an additional appropriation.
Okay, so, um, maintenance is sitting in the audience, and just so, do you guys, would you like to come up here? Do you have any questions for it? Because again, one of the things that I, my concern is, is when the commissioners start spending out of other people's budgets. And because they are here and you would agree to, to pay for that, you know, I, I just hate that the commissioners approve stuff and we're spending out of somebody else's budget.
It's your budget, it's your budget, and they have a ma, it's your building, they have a maintenance and repair budget.
Okay, all right.
How confident are you?
Uh, confident enough that I think it's in the best interest of all parties. I mean, I live in this community. I have two businesses in this community. I have property in this community. I'm confident enough that I think it's in, uh, the best avenue of both the elected official and the residents of LaPorte County to spend this money and make an attempt at it. I'm that confident.
Okay.
I don't wanna say a hundred, because nothing's a hundred, and when I give my word, but I'm that confident that I think for what it's gonna cost for the new units, and the new units show up and you put them there and you have the exact same problem, I definitely think that this is in the best interest of all parties to, to give this a shot.
And we ca, and we reuse the old units?
Nothing changes other than the adhesive.
Adhesive. Uh, Cheryl and you guys got some questions?
I don't.
Okay.
No questions from.
No questions.
Yeah, um, so I make a motion to try this.
I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Oh, wait, we, we should say not to exceed.
Not to exceed twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And you've, you've never steered us wrong. I have faith in your company.
Yeah, and we can work, we have your permission to work with the sheriff to get that pot emptied at the time it works for him.
So we have a motion for, uh, not to exceed twenty thousand. I'll second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment is still open. Is there anyone else for public comment? Good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Dean White, uh, three zero six six North Highway thirty five, LaPorte. Um, I'm here to, uh, uh, readdress the, uh, Soldiers Memorial Park Vista View. Um, I have continually talked to the Environmental Service Director, Paul Vicari, and, um, they have a plan, um, that will coincide with, uh, natural resources and, and such. Um, however, he said that the delay at this time is that, uh, they need seven thousand dollars, uh, to put this into motion. Months ago, when I first addressed, I, I get a couple pledges to, uh, uh, total seven thousand dollars, uh, to, for this. But, um, it was drawn up, dragged out for so many months that the, uh, uh, parties, um, were very upset, you know, with, uh, the, the, uh, commissioners, uh, and not, uh, really embarking on this project, uh, wholeheartedly. So they withdrew their pledges. They were not donations. And so at this time, I'm wondering if I could get permission from your attorney to put a, uh, article request in, in the, uh, uh, social media to, um, ask for donations this time to, uh, to come up with seven thousand dollars if, if, if you can't afford it.
So this is a Q and A. I mean, this is not a Q and A. This is public comment. Um, I know you've been working with MS four, and I know that the property there has gone through some different land usage. So I'm not really sure what, you know, how much of that corner, um, actually is still belongs to, um, the county, because some of that property was sold off. So we would look into it, and I'll get ahold of Paul Vicari as well.
Right.
So, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on, anyone else for public comment? Anyone else for public comment? Going once, going twice, sold. Okay, moving on. Uh, department head comment.
Good morning, uh, Deion Campbell, Executive Director Juvenile Services Center. Um, I wanted to start off by congratulating Commissioner Steve on being elected to that position. Um, and I also, um, wanted to publicly thank Commissioner Grandma Rosa, um, for her care and concern for the children of the Juvenile Services Center as well as the employees. Um, she, along with Cheryl Listensky and Angie Davis, we had a heating emergency in our building where temperatures dropped, um, dramatically. And, uh, they came out and rectified the situation. It was very, very commendable. Um, and we just, uh, on behalf of the staff and the kids, we just wanna say thank you for your care and concern for all that we do at the juvenile center, and it was greatly, greatly appreciated.
Now, we appreciate you and the staff, honestly, because.
Straining those kids out, right.
Yeah, we do.
I also have a present, uh, presentation.
Have it.
Can I do that now or?
Yes. We'll just move him up.
Yeah. Before you, I have quotes. Um, I was, uh, requested by the council to come and present the quotes that I received. We're looking to purchase three vehicles. And the way this process happened, um, I went to county maintenance and requested to know what type of vehicles, uh, would be best, that they knew how to service and what would be best, and they gave me a list of vehicles. Um, I then went through QPA for the type of vehicles that we needed. And there was one transportation vehicle that was available, but it was ten thousand dollars more than the quotes that I received. So after getting that information, um, from, uh, counting, county maintenance, I went to local dealerships and requested governmental fleet rates on their vehicles. What you have before you are three quotes, um, from those different, um, companies, and it was LaPorte, Magnuson Chrysler. Uh, they, uh, put in a quote for thirty nine, seven thirty seven. Uh, Michigan City David Taylor Chrysler, uh, put in a quote for thirty nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty four and seventy six cents. And then Michiana Chrysler put in a quote for forty one thousand, eight hundred and thirty seven dollars. And again, those were ten thousand dollars less than what the QPA for a transportation vehicle was. Um, and that's how we got to this point. So I'm presenting these quotes before the commissioners.
Okay, so we're gonna, um, I'll step down, make the motion to have you go down to the council, have you go to the council, because that was pretty much what it was. You went to the council, they kicked you back up to us.
Correct.
I'm just gonna give you permission to go back to the council to ask for, um, the purchase of the Chryslers for thirty nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty seven dollars. And that would be, um, two vehicles and then two regular vehicles and then one transportation vehicle, correct?
It would be three vans.
Oh, all of them are two vans.
Three vans. We initially requested four vehicles, um, sometime last year, and we were told to just go after three for now and then come back this year and ask for the, uh, fourth, which would be a security transportation vehicle.
Okay, so my motion is to go with the lowest, uh, cost, three vehicles.
I second that.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You're ready. And honestly, thank you. You guys really do a fabulous job out there. You, your staff, we really do appreciate you guys and what you're doing for the children.
You've been working on this for quite some time.
Yes, yes, so, thank you.
Thank you.
No, but we need to get a call between you and me, because.
Department heads, any other department heads.
Conversation wasn't too nice.
Good morning, Commissioners, Jeremy Sabecki, Superintendent of the Parks Department. Um, I sent out to, or had Diane send out to county yesterday, the, um, uh, twenty twenty four annual report, and I just wanted to hit some highlights at, at this meeting for the public. And if somebody wants that by email, I can send it and just get ahold of us at the Parks Department. But, uh, some of the highlights from twenty twenty four, um, the new property, uh, for the forty acre property out at Rolling Prairie, we're working on a plan. We got a, approval last night from the board to move forward with the, uh, a master plan for that property, so that'll be coming this year. Um, additional forty three acres adjacent to Bloom County Park was purchased through the DNR for a, a restoration project. So that'll be, uh, within the next couple of years, we'll have forty three more acres out at Bloom. That puts us well over a hundred acres out there at Bloom. Um, or closer to one fifty than just over a hundred, but, um, improvements to the Grove Shelter out at Bloom. Our foundation funded a new roof siding, ceiling, and concrete at, at Bloom Shelter, at, or Bloom Park Grove Shelter. We, we set a new record for visitation. We have, uh, car counters at our, our, our gate. We we set a new record for visitation. We have car counters at our our gates. We we hit over five hundred thousand this year at all of our parks. So that's a big, big milestone for us. We've, we've been, before COVID, I'd say we're averaging closer to four hundred thousand, just under four hundred thousand. And and since then, we've been ticking up every year. So that's a, that's a big, that's a big deal for us. We brought back hay rides. We haven't done hay rides in probably fifteen years. And our nineteen forty eighth Ford tractor that we we've had for years, got that back up and going and started doing those. We're, right now, we're doing a couple a year, one in the spring, one in the fall. So watch for that. We usually try to do them at a different park each time. New roof on the E E C and and in Canada Lodge, our main office and and rental center out there at Red Mill. Thanks to the commission and council for funding those projects. New siding and paint was finished up at the nature center this past year. We've replaced a boardwalk at Bloom Park that was probably twenty five years old. That was rotted out and replaced that over a wetland. And then lastly, you know, I focus a lot on maintenance. Steve was at our meeting last night. I focus a lot on maintenance. But our program staff did a hundred and fourteen programs for five thousand, seven hundred and sixty one participants. And and I think when you think about that, there's only three hundred and sixty five days in a year. And they did a hundred and fourteen programs, meaning they're, you know, one of, one out of every three days, they're doing a program. Plus, they're in the schools and then manning the nature center for people. So just wanted to 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 mention that and and say what a great staff we've got out there. And and I think people are realizing what what gems we have in our county parks. So. And then lastly, I wanted to mention too, Commissioner Hollyfield was at the the meeting last night. But we've been, we've been kind of talking about a generator for for years out at at our, at our office and rental hall. And my my park board last night approved, we have non-reverting funds that we're going to go ahead and and put in a generator at Red Mill County Park and pay for it with our our user fees is basically what that is. It's about a forty thousand dollar purchase. So we're going to start moving forward. I gotta work with the auditor to get those funds where they, you know, where they're going to be usable for us. And but but I think this is something that, as we've seen with all the county buildings, freezing temperatures, you know, out there, we get a lot of power outages actually. So, you know, we're down maybe a day at a time, sometimes two. And that would be a bad thing with bad timing and and especially if you have a wedding scheduled. And and I don't want to deal with that either. So, but you know, that money right back into. What's that?
Do you need a motion from us?
No, this is our money. As of right now, I don't. I'll work with the auditor and make sure we're good. But but I just want to, you know, this is putting money that people pay us right back into the facilities that they're they're paying to use. So I think that's a, our board and and I think that's a wise use of our resources. So, thank you.
I just want to say thank you for you and your board enlightening me last night. You guys are looking out for the taxpayers' money. You're going to use stuff that's come in. You're not going to request any more taxpayer money. I appreciate that.
And I'd like to say thank you because I I know you do a lot with very little.
Yeah.
And so, you know, if there's anyone who can make their money stretch and their workforce stretch, you really do it. So we appreciate it.
Yeah, we're very fortunate to have that revenue. A lot of departments don't have that. I mean, I don't know how a building department would would bring in money like like we're able to do. But but, you know, we're, we're, we'll try to keep using that wisely and and supplementing our, our, our general fund money. So.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for department head?
Good morning, Monica Thomas, H R Director. I'd like, at this time, ask your permission to have our food truck event this year. The dates we're looking at is June twelfth for Michigan City and June thirteenth for La Porte. I didn't get on the agenda, but this is a event that we started doing last year and it was a huge success. So I'd like to continue to do that.
Do you need a motion from us or?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that you go forward this project. I heard it was great last year.
So we have a motion. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 And also, can I approach?
Sure.
Thank you.
So I just want to ask real quick, let's go back to the food truck because everyone likes to talk about food. Didn't we do one in the fall as well?
Yes, we did.
Look at those dates together for us at another time.
Okay, absolutely.
Beautiful.
Yep, we're gearing up right now. We have our vendors all lined up. A lot of them are excited. A lot of them are asked, people are asking, can they be a part of it? So we're looking for it this year and trying to get that event squared away and possibly have some other vendors out there as well.
Okay.
Yeah. Before you is the guidelines that I'd like to send out to our department heads as just a guideline. I don't know if Guy, you have to review it. I mean, it's just a go with a guideline for COVID due to the increased numbers that we're having with employees being out sick. I think this is a guideline that we could use in-house for our employees as far as like return to work, the safety precautions that we need to use for the the increase of the COVID and the R S V and respiratory things that are going around.
Are you asking me if this is okay?
Yes.
I read it. It's okay.
Okay, oh, thank you.
Are are we mandating any of these?
It's it's not a mandate. I just want to use it as a guideline for our staff.
Because I have a hard, I have a hard time. I fought the mask mandate tooth and nail years ago. I still think it's a, so we're not mandating the happen.
No, 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 we're not mandating it, but it's just a guideline that we have in place for when employees are out sick. We just have something to go by for our department heads.
I make a motion that we accept this.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye. Thank you. And also, I'd like to make it be publicly known that we now have a G I S coordinator, Mr. Daniel Barnes. If he's here. He took place, started his job Monday, and we just all like to welcome him to La Porte County. And Dan, do you want to say anything?
Thank you so much for having me.
Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Department head comments. Good morning.
Morning. Charity Glazer, Highway Department Superintendent. So we are about to start advertising for our annual pavement projects. And it's come to our attention on Monday that Reeve Riley has offered to extend their twenty twenty four paving bid into twenty twenty five. So it's pretty time sensitive. That's why I'm bringing it to you today. Over the years, it has, the the bids have gone up in price. They haven't decreased in the last five years. The last three years, the average increase was eighteen percent. The last two years, the average was around eight percent increase. So if, I know in three prior years, we have extended it, twenty thirteen and twenty fourteen, we extended it, and also in twenty sixteen. There's a code, state code that says for contract renewals that this is legal. And I did talk to Guy about it. And as long as there's no escalation, it is okay to do. So I am leaving up to you. If you don't want to approve that contract, then we'll put it out to bid.
Guy?
This is fine if you choose to go ahead and do it. It's fine.
So they would hold the exact same price per ton mile, however they do it, as they did last year?
Yes, sir.
And this has been done before in the past?
Three times that I know of prior, yes.
Guy, I got a question. What happens if we choose to do this and Milestone all of a sudden throws a hissy fit?
You can go ahead and throw a hissy fit.
Okay.
We'll, we'll deal with it at that point in time.
Because their milestone usually, or almost always, is higher.
Yes.
Okay.
And the last two years, pretty significant higher. But we usually accept both just in case something happens and we need to use both, but.
Okay.
Have you offered?
No, this just came to me Monday.
Hold on one second. Have you also offered with them to extend their two thousand and twenty four contract through two thousand and twenty five?
I have not, but I can reach out to them.
Yep, go ahead and do that.
Oh, ask, ask them, see if they want to do it. Okay, just in case. I mean, we used to got till next commissioner, commissioner's meeting, correct?
Well, we want to advertise here at the end of the week for our stuff. So if we don't, if we don't get this done and open in March, then that's going to postpone us for our paving. So we need to get, yeah, that's why it's time sensitive. So.
I make a motion that we accept this offer from Reeve Riley.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Any other department heads? We're going to close department heads. Request. Consider road closure for Trifor Health and Annual Tri- Triathlon. It'll be on July twelfth, twenty twenty five.
I've looked at these maps and they've done this before. I don't see any reason why we can't approve this to happen again. And the way it looks, they're going to work with the city as well. So I I make a motion we approve this.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Consider road closure for Y M C A's Tour de La Porte. That would be on August twenty third, twenty twenty five.
Wow, same thing. I feel that they've, they've presented this plan. They've talked with the Sheriff's Department and La Porte City Police for the routes and everything else. They've done it before. I make a motion we accept this.
We have, and I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Moving on to old business, consider addendum between Commissioners and NIPSCO for not, to not oppose settlement agreement between NIPSCO and O U C C in rate case number four, six, one, two, zero. And consider intervention in case number four, six, one, eight, three, the computer centers to protect county's interests. Presenting.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. Attorney Shaw Friedman, seven oh five Lincoln Way, La Porte. Commissioners, as you know, we were fully prepared to go to contested hearings in Indianapolis starting today on NIPSCO's second request for an electric rate increase in just two years. But the State's Office of Utility Consumer Counselor, the O U C C, and other industrial parties like U S Steel and commercial parties like Walmart began negotiating for a settlement. One that would still have residential rates likely increased by double digits. And it is not a settlement we can support, nor can the steel workers, nor can Citizens Action Coalition. However, in return for not opposing the settlement, my office has negotiated some important commitments from NIPSCO just for La Porte County. Because we were the only governmental entity to intervene and offer written expert testimony, we had the leverage to bring NIPSCO to the table. As others have wisely said, if you're not at the table, you're likely on the menu. And that certainly holds true in utility proceedings and more on that as we go along. It's important for you all and the public to understand why the O U C C, which is the public's representative in these utility proceedings, worried that going to contested hearing would mean a result after hearing that was even worse than what they negotiated. It's because the five members of the Indiana Utility Regulatory Commission, three of whom have their governor's appointments up this year, have gotten a reputation around the country as absolutely bending over backwards to accommodate the investor-owned utilities. Candidly, the I U R C just doesn't do a good job anymore like they did ten to fifteen years ago of balancing ratepayer interest. And that's why it's important that members of the public communicate with this governor and ask him to make good on his campaign promise about utility affordability by appoint, appointing members of the I U R C who will weigh ratepayer interest more and truly hold the utilities accountable for high rates, poor reliability and low levels of customer satisfaction. A good example of how bad things have become, the Evansville Courier reported just this past Thursday that the I U R C granted Center Point Utility, which is a major utility down in the southern part of the state, a rate hike one hundred sixty six percent higher than that requested by the company in a natural gas case. NIPSCO's electric rates after the twenty twenty three rate case increases were already the highest in the state and some of the highest in the nation. Candidly, this five-member I U R C seems to be far more concerned with how utilities like NIPSCO are viewed on Wall Street than on Main Street. More than anything, we need the I U R C being directed by the governor to shift from cost-plus ratemaking, which simply grants any utility's request for capital investment and grants them a healthy profit margin to what is known in many states as performance-based ratemaking that provides incentives for good performance on indicators like affordability, customer service, and that also provides some savings and revenue sharing with ratepayers rather than just shareholders. Now, having seen this settlement coming, my office at the specific direction of County Commission President Grandma Rosa went to work getting the best possible deal for La Porte County. And I'm pleased to report we've done that with the proposed addendum in front of you that we're asking you to consider and approve today. There are four key deal points we were able to secure. First off, first deal point, as recommended by County Commission President Grandma Rosa, rather than have the Michigan City Generating Station simply shuttered in twenty twenty eight, leaving a hulking mess, NIPSCO has agreed to study over the next six months the potential of converting the generating station to a combined cycle gas turbine facility or a gas beaker plant with gas-fired facilities, as you know, emitting half the emissions of a coal plant, and study other cleaner alternatives, for instance, such as a battery storage facility that would keep those one hundred twenty five good-paying steelworker jobs here and most importantly, retain the five million dollars a year in property taxes paid to the city and the county. That's the first deal point. Secondly, NIPSCO has agreed in a second deal point to conduct the same feasibility study for either a gas-fuel plant or other cleaner energy generation technology at another site in La Porte County. This deals precisely with the concern that I talked about the last time I was here with you, which is that county commissioners have since twenty oh eight been raising with various resolutions the concern that called on NIPSCO as they develop new generation, develop the facilities in the service territory, not in far-off locations like Kentucky where they're planning a two hundred megawatt solar facility in Breckenridge County, Kentucky. The position of this county for seventeen years has been those who pay NIPSCO rates should receive the benefit of the jobs and tax revenues from any new generating facility. Our third deal point we secured was a five million dollar commitment for added electric infrastructure for any site in La Porte County to assist economic development and job creation here. You can imagine how pleased our Economic Development Director, Matt Reardon, is with that deal point. Our fourth and final deal point we secured ensures that the three point five million we secured back in a twenty nineteen rate case for any electric infrastructure to aid a new manufacturing or solar development at K I P, which was scheduled to expire next year. It was a key tool in Matt's toolbox as he talked with prospects to develop K I P, that that stays intact now till twenty thirty. Importantly, as part of the addendum in front of you, we reserve the right to intervene in other pending I U R C causes of action to protect La Porte County's interest. And I know Matt strongly endorses our intervening in cause four, six, one, eight, three, which deals now with NIPSCO setting up its own construction and operating firm to build generation to serve data centers and other mega-load operations. It's called NIPSCO Generation LLC. NIPSCO is now touting on Wall Street that they intend up to ten billion dollars in capital expenditures to serve the data centers. And it is critical that those costs be fully passed on to the data centers owned by the tech billionaires and that a certain amount of revenue sharing benefit ratepayers, not just wealthy investors on Wall Street. I can tell you that the success that we had in securing the deal we did for La Porte County was because this commission invested in the intervention, including testimony. Ms. Grandma Rosa provided us written testimony, as did our two expert witnesses that you allowed us to hire. That gave us the leverage we needed. You can be proud that the funds invested, the fifty thousand that you invested in this intervention will result in a commitment of millions of dollars invested by NIPSCO in La Porte County to assist economic development and job creation. Now, I know Matt feels strongly about the need to intervene in the I U R C cause of action dealing with data centers so that we can continue to have leverage and input in these huge decisions that affect the rates we pay, the service we receive, and how costs from serving these new mega-load customers will be allocated. And I want to have him have an opportunity to speak to that as well. So we're asking today for approval, not just for the enclosed addendum, which you all have, but also the authorization to intervene in four, six, one, eight, three as well. And I'll have Matt come up and say a few words if if he would at this time.
Good morning, Commissioners. To boil it down to pretty basic stuff, as the county continues to explore new developments and investments, whether that's data-related or manufacturing-related, we attempt to control our environment, whether that's land cost or utility cost, whether that's electric, gas, water or sanitary. We can only do so. We can only do so much in our, uh, participation with us and with companies. And when we don't have leverage to do anything, uh, we're at a disadvantage. And that may be true of here and all the rest of the territory. And these are, um, policy issues, uh, for the state of Indiana to consider. We can have the best project and you yourselves can participate in tax incentives of all kinds, except there is no mechanism to leverage the utilities in this process. So we're held hostage, uh, by not being participatory in these things. Now, this isn't to create an atmosphere of us and them, ratepayers, voters versus manufacturers and operators. This is an effort to find out why it is the, the entities responsible. And this is not just the, the, the incumbent utility here. This is the state. Why are, why are we having to pick up the cost or added cost that occurs when developments happen? When I say we, I say we as taxpayers of Indiana. There is a nominal benefit, an economic development rider rate that lasts three years. Let me just say that's not a dealmaker, uh, or deal breaker. What is, is timely delivery of, of power and, uh, the ability to, to work collaboratively with local jurisdictions to identify where this is and where it can be. Um, as I mentioned to the governor previous, about two items I felt important in economic development. One of them was transportation funding in the state of Indiana and that the state has done a pretty good job of that over the years. And the second thing was, what are you going to do about power? Because whether it's a manufact- a corn processing manufacturer or a magnet manufacturer or a data center, having to an answer of, we can service you in three years is not acceptable. It's just not acceptable. So I say, how many, what is the opportunity cost by not participating in this process? You know, we'll never know. I could sit here and tell you how the meetings we have and the discussions about power, when can it happen, and, and so on. Now, I'm not directly, um, uh, being critical of NIPSCO. I'm talking about the policy and process that we have in our state. And it's not favorable to jurisdictions that seek to increase more development. And as this commission knows, and the county councilors will find out, in every city and town, as the General Assembly continues to review opportunities to reduce taxes, if you don't continue to grow, you'll have less revenue to provide services to the residents. So that's why it's important to participate in these discussions. It would be very helpful. Now, hopefully, there's a positive outcome. But, you know, to, to make sure that, that the governor and the state and the IURC is aware, this is a huge component in economic development and we kind of just go along like it's, it's a foregone conclusion. It, it's not. And we need to be able to control our environment a little bit more. So that's, that's about it. Thank you.
I have a couple of questions. On the plan to convert Michigan City, what happens if they take the six months to study and then all of a sudden they're, oh, they blow us off? Is there any contingency we can go back against them?
Absolutely. There is still, they would have to file with the Utility Commission a formal petition to close. They've talked about closing it in 2028. As you know, Commissioner, we talked about the fact that they are with the environmental improvements. Technically, they could continue operating it till 2032 in its current form. Absolutely. Just depending on the, um, outcome of the study, we have the opportunity to intervene in yet another cause of action that will deal with the Michigan City Gen Station and have our input in it.
I spent two days downstate going over bills and talking to different, uh, representatives. There's also bills down there to help convert these coal plants to nuclear. Is that on the table for this?
Uh, no.
I think it's a better plan than.
I hear you. You know, what's interesting is Purdue just did a study on what coal-fired generating stations in the, uh, state would be amenable to the small modular reactors. Uh, and the Michigan City location because of nearby population. And I'll provide that to the commission. I think you may find that interesting to read because there were several coal-fired generating stations around the state that Purdue felt would be amenable to small modular reactors. And you're right, they need to be looked at. Uh, and in fact, the legislature is looking at ways to help expedite some of those because they can be, you know, the smaller reactors are, are, are smaller in size, better contained, uh, and have a pretty good track record in terms of safety. So, uh, that's being explored, but I will provide to the commission the study that says probably not for Michigan City, both because of population and some other issues. But I think you'll find that of interest.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Let me also provide, if I might approach to, an interesting article that I think you will find of interest, the Commissioners. This was a nice source, as Matt has talked about, is pitching itself on Wall Street as a data center darling. They're talking now about the $10 billion in capital expenditures. So it's all going to come down to, uh, who's going to pay for that? And trying to protect ratepayers in this process will be interesting. And this particular report talks about, uh, among the things that they're pitching on Wall Street is what is really a weak regulatory climate in Indiana, which is what we've been concerned about. That the IURC needs to hold the utilities' feet to the fire to pass on savings to ratepayers. Why should ratepayers be bearing the full burden, for instance, of, of, of whether it's new development like data centers or anything else? There ought to be revenue sharing. That's part of what performance-based ratemaking could bring to the state, which is a sharing of revenues. Uh, I think I mentioned at our previous time here that the county was able to get 10 to 15 years ago of benefits so that when the NIPSCO gained revenues on off-system sales, that that was shared equally with ratepayers. That'll be the same thing on other types of major projects like this. So that's one of the things we will be raising in 46183. And I'd like to give copies of that if I could.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I, I've noticed, I've been involved in NIPSCO my whole life through my parents, relatives, family, friends. They're no longer wanting to be a energy-generating company. And I think they're jumping on a bandwagon with these federal tax subsidies and dollars with, uh, solar, which I think are about to go away. And it appears to me they don't have a second plan in place. So I make a motion that we accept this agreement and move forward with it. Thank you.
I'll, um, second. So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. You know, I'd like to thank you because this really, I, I don't think that the public really understands how involved this is and how much research you really need to do and, and really like going back and, you know, this was something that you were prepared to bring to us. Um, it wasn't part of your presentation. I just, I really want to say thank you because you're really looking out for the county, for the residents, and everyone else. So we appreciate that.
Thank you, Commissioner. And I got to say, the, the success that the county's had, and we've had great success over the past 15 to 20 years, is because of a team effort. Where Commissioners like yourself, and there were prior Commissioners, folks like Commissioner Houston, uh, Hager, uh, and others, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Bahatchik, back then, all said, look, we have got to get our fair return. We have got to have customers treated fairly. And so the wins that the county's had, part of our ability to leverage this settlement was because of the reputation the county has built as being a player in these proceedings. And, uh, and so having had, and again, the authorization that you gave us to hire expert testimony made a huge factor in terms of having NIPSCO come to the table and getting the deal points that we did. And so I appreciate that. And again, it's a team effort. Let's face it. Any success, and you see it with the department heads who took to the mic today. They all come up and talk about the fact that this is a team effort on the part of La Porte County. So I appreciate the support. And I'll go ahead. Uh, I've got meetings down there tomorrow in the case. And what I'd like to do is take, I'll have you sign the, um, the signature page.
Get there for you today.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, one moment, just for clarification. Mr. Friedman spoke about two issues. Was the motion and passing the intervention also in the other matter?
Yes.
Or was it just for the?
Yes, amend that. It'll be for both issues.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, we're going to jump back up because we did miss, um, consider permission to remove the canopy at the fairground entrance. We, we spoke about it, but we didn't actually make a motion and vote on that.
I attended the last FMEC meeting and they requested they want to take that down. So I brought it forward. I make a motion that we allow them to do that.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second to remove the canopy at the fairgrounds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. We'll move on to new business. Consider opening community crossing bids for 15-plus miles of road paving within the, within several different townships. Mitch Bishop will be presenting.
Madam Commissioner, uh, President, I have two bids here, two proposals that were received as of this morning. The first bid was from Milestone Contractors. I'm just going to open it right here in front of everybody. And turn it over to the attorney. And then the second one was from Reeve Riley, a little thicker. And this was received also this morning, about an hour later.
Okay, Milestones of bid is in order. Everything is in the bid package. Same with Reeve Riley. What I'd recommend is that we hand these to Mitch Bishop. He can have a look at them and then come back and report before the end of the meeting. Does that work, Mitch?
Yeah. Thanks, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, he'll be presenting the next few things, though. So consider, uh, two professional on-call contracts with Amber Marsh and S.J.C.A. Engineering.
Yeah, I was asked to receive, uh, or go out and get a couple different on-call professional services contracts, uh, basically to help the highway department and myself uh, with our daily activities if needed. Uh, I think both of them have a amount of $150,000. Um, and it's broken down by hourly, by their service we'd be utilizing if we need to utilize them. Um, so it would give us a total of three on-call contracts. So then we could also compare to three if we need a service and give us a lot more flexibility in the department. And, um, so, for instance, if we were going to, normally it might save us a lot of time and flexibility because we might have to score, put RFQ out, potentially, and then potentially score any incoming, um, layers of interest. And so this will make that process a lot quicker. If we need something, maybe within a week or two, this can done a lot quicker and expedite that.
Can we have a motion?
I think a motion to accept that.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second for, um, two professional on-call contracts, including the one that we currently have. So it'll be three total.
Right. Currently, we have, uh, Lockneither Group. Uh, this would be Amber Marsh and S.J.C.A. as well. So we have three.
Now, these will also be on-call to help and assist with, uh, surveying duties?
Yeah, um, so, I don't know if you saw, but there is basically all their services and it's drawn out by the hourly fee, depending on that service. So, you know, we got electrical engineering, structural, uh, surveying, yes, that's all here as well, architectural, uh, even, uh, GIS. So it's pretty much any service under their firm's umbrella.
Okay.
It's, it's here.
Thank you.
So we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Moving on, consider comprehensive plans supplement with.
Yeah, so, excuse me. Um, probably three, three, four months ago, I started working with, uh, the Unity Foundation, Maggie Sparks. And they were applying for an EDA Lilly Foundation grant, uh, mostly geared to housing in the community. And at that time, I told them, hey, we're doing a comprehensive plan. It's a 20-year plan. It looks at all the growth and development. And it's a policy plan that has a horizon of 20 years. I said, you know, there'd be, we're doing some mapping and other things with that. And so in this, in front of you today, um, our consultant is the Antero Group that be doing that work. And we should be having a kickoff uh, for our comprehensive plan update, which will take probably 18 months. But I said a good project would be, um, as far as utilities in the county, is, hey, could we use this for, um, updating our GIS? Um, and then going in further into our beacon system? So we could update your utilities as far as that? So when you're, if you're a developer, a lot of questions, I know Matt and everybody else gets is, you know, this service line, this main, is it six inches, it's 12 inches? So this would be rarely available to any developer looking to invest our community. They could go in a beacon system. They could see lift stations. They could see valves. They could see hydrants. They could see, uh, sewer and water mains and the collection systems. That would all be a part of this. Also, there's a fiscal analysis part of it as well. So, um, and it is 100% funded. So I would not have to go in front of council for any additional funding. So that's also a great thing. But I think it's beneficial and it'd be a good supplement to the, uh, comprehensive plan effort.
I make a motion that we accept that.
I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you. So you'll come back. We'll, we'll go on to the next one. You'll come back with the bids. So we're going to have a discussion on crow removal relocation at the La Porte County Courthouse.
Commissioner, we originally first crossed out the D, but then we put it back in when you found that.
Oh.
That's true.
Okay, take, take your.
Yeah, we'll take them first and then we'll.
No worries.
Good morning.
Morning.
Commissioners. I'm Cheryl Listensky, Director of Facilities. And there's Angie behind me. She's the Assistant Director. So, um, I would like to bring up the ongoing crow problem at the La Porte Courthouse, which has been an issue for many years. It's also an issue in many other municipalities. One of the major challenges is the droppings on the sidewalks, which has been a challenge for us to power wash in the winter months. Um, and it's hard to keep up with. Angie, my Assistant Director, has been researching solutions. But these are only temporary. Um, if we do manage to move the crows from our buildings, they are likely to relocate in other city buildings, which could turn this into a citywide issue. I would appreciate hearing your thoughts and on the best way to address this problem.
I, I spoke with Mayor Dermody. Um, if we could relocate him to City Hall, that would be wonderful. But, uh.
I'm sure he would appreciate that.
Mr. Haney and I spoke. He found some research information. I forwarded to you. I forwarded some information. I spoke with DNR. What I found very, very intriguing from our own federal and state government is that these crows are federally protected and state-protected, some endangered or something. And I've killed hundreds of them over the years on my farm, so I guess I'm in trouble.
Ooh, no, no.
Don't say that publicly.
Just, DNR doesn't scare me.
Theoretically.
So, and everything I found, as you said, it's only going to be temporary, I think. So I, do you have an idea what you think might be the best option to try to keep the people happy temporarily?
Well, can we talk about some of the resolutions we've done in the past? We, um, we went out, we bought these owls and they had sonars in them that didn't work. We, we went out, we bought these owls, and they had sonars in them that didn't work. Lighting up the building is an option, but unfortunately, lighting up the building, the light would have to flash on and off, on and off. And I don't know how, you know, I don't know how effective that would be cost-efficient wise. We would have to be putting big spotters on the building, so, and it's, it probably wouldn't be a really good solution anyways. So, I really do believe, unfortunately, throughout the years, we have used many different mechanisms on trying to work with these birds. And unfortunately, I think it's just going to come down, right down to just cleaning what we have. In the winter months, it becomes a lot heavier. Every building radiates heat from it. The courthouse is no different, so it's a warmer area. Unfortunately, we have many, many trees planted around our courthouse. Birds will nest in those trees, they will roost in the trees. So, unfortunately, we're not going to go cutting trees down around the buildings. So, I just think that it's going to be a matter of figuring out how we have a better process of cleaning. And unfortunately, one of the biggest problems we have is we cannot be out there power washing in the wintertime and causing ice problems. So, I don't know where we're going to go from here.
Another option, Mr. Haney found, and I talked with him, lasers. They've had some good results with lasers. Unfortunately, with the US Highway right there next door, and you have to be very careful how you laser in someone's eyes while they're driving, that's not good. There's another option that's probably off the table, as Ms. Graham said. We've tried about everything there is.
And there is a lot, what I've been reading, that goes into using those lasers.
Yes.
So, and you have to use those in the evening hours, which also, you know, goes into more cost.
More cost, yeah. So, unfortunately, it may be something, I mean, we'll keep looking, and I hope you'll keep researching, but it may be something we just have to learn to live with. Now, Mayor Dermody did speak with me and said he's willing to help send some help from the bid district to help clean, help our maintenance clean that. And if he's not, let me know, and I'll yank his chain a little bit. So, so I think it's going to have, since it's in the middle of his downtown, and it's our courthouse, I think there'll be something, we're both going to have to address the issues together and try to work to a resolution. So, I thank you for all the time you put into it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, now, we're going to have to have a discussion on fire suppression system in the jail.
So, a few weeks ago, we had a vendor come out to the jail, and they were working on the fire suppression system, and they forgot to cap a pipe, and the water came on and caused another water loss, unlike some of the other issues with our, with our county, which was a first-party claim, where we made a claim against our own insurance company under the policy when a pipe just broke. This is a third-party claim. And I put them on notice, and we had an inspection last week, and they've lawyered up, and they came out with an engineer and a lawyer. At this point in time, in order for me to move forward with the claim, I need to develop a scope so I can make a demand to the third party, to the other lawyer. Since Lepore County Project Management has already been involved with the cleanup and the mechanical and bypassing the electric, I would like to be able to retain Lepore County Project Management to do the scope. And also, regardless of whether we're going to have to sue the other company or settle the case, there's a number of mechanical and electrical things that need to be ordered, and you have months in which some of that information can come in. We can get those products. So, I would like the authority to move forward to the best of my ability to get this claim moving so we can scope it, get a demand out to the other side, and see where they're
I make a motion that we give you authority to do that because it's got to get fixed regardless. And like you said, it's going to take months to get some of these parts ordered. And Andy and his crew are the ones that have fixed it for us to keep it going, so they'll know what they did and what needs to be redone.
Right. And so, we've already taken on the expense of mitigation, and we've already taken on the expense of cleaning up the insulation. The insulators were out there insulating, but I understand there's a number of electrical panels, and there are issues with potential pump also that need to be ordered. So, I'd like to be able to get with them, tell them what I need, and move forward with their...
I include all that in my motion.
Okay.
So, we have a motion. I'll second. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And then, if Mitch would like to come back up here with his proposal on the bids.
Yes. Quickly reviewed everything, and Reeve Riley's price was $3,199,478. So, a little bid is Reeve. Did you want me to come back? I really kind of do need to get this signed fairly, I can't come back your next meeting or if you want to take care of that now.
Do you feel like you need to go through more of it?
No.
Or are you confident?
Everything's...
Confident with...
Everything is complete in there.
Okay. So, what's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion that you, are you recommending Reeve Riley's bid?
Yes.
I make a motion, we accept Reeve Riley's bid.
All right.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So, then, motion to adjourn?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, everyone.